Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council's study session for the morning of Thursday, May the 6th. The first item on our agenda is to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on a summary wrap-up of the fiscal year 2021-22 budget. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. We just have a few items to go over with council, and we wanted to appreciate council for the long hours on the budget review. The staff recognized the council had many really good questions and input, and so today we have a few slides. Brian can kind of go through them, but what we want to also show you, as you know, not every department was able to come and make a presentation, but there are some improvements, some additions to the budget that are included with some of those departments, so we just want to briefly go over those highlights. And then there was also some input that we received from council, and we're trying to address in this wrap-up, but I'll let Brian cover that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As the city manager mentioned, it's been a long month of department presentations, and you finally made it to the last one of this one. So, just putting it all together, we came to a forecast, came to you with a forecast, and then also with some capital improvement program presentations for the non-utilities and utilities. We did a budget overview, and then you also had the department budget presentations. So, putting that all together, we followed our five financial principles for the general governmental, just to kind of re-review those for the balanced net sources and uses, sustaining programs and services, and then also investment in capital and lifecycle replacement. We also have five financial principles for the utility fund that we followed when doing the budget. And going through all that, we had the emphasis that we presented at the proposed budget. So, this fiscal year 21-22 budget emphasis was investing on community growth, community safety, meeting community needs and growth, and then also investing in transportation and transit. And then, as the city manager mentioned, there are some departments that didn't have a chance to present, but also things added on the request of council. And to summarize those, these budget enhancements not presented, three, there's the smart metering support, there will be three positions in business services for that as we implement the smart meters, also the city attorney, an assistant city attorney for the city attorney's office, in addition to the downtown transformation team, also a marketing and communications specialist for the economic development office, and that is for the business licenses and helping the businesses and helping them with that as part of that, the presentation that was presented on those business licenses. So, that position will help support and support the businesses, then also the...
Just quickly, Brian, in that conversation, Mayor and council, the councils seem to be interested in not just collecting information about small businesses through the license, but also using it as a way to communicate with them, share information, and so that's what this position, that would be one of its main responsibilities. Obviously, could do other work for the economic development department, which they've asked for, but specifically focused on small business, marketing, communications.
And then also, in addition to, we have outage management system coordinator. I know Frank and Candace spoke a lot on the outage management system and how that can help the residents and also the city. We do have in the budget for next fiscal year, a coordinator to oversee that management system. And then, at the West Mesa Fleet Service Center, there's in the budget to upgrade the CNG fuel station, which will help the environmental management sustainability for fueling their trucks. Then also at Fleet Services, a new foreman position is added. And then also at the West Mesa Service Center, they'll be upgrading their current camera system, it's just an upgrade from the old cameras to the new cameras, and help them with the security for that. And then also a marketing program assistant at Falcon Field to help promote, because they've been really busy, but it's to help promote the economic viability of the Falcon Field and promote them even more. And then also four new sworn for fire and medical, captain engineer, and two firefighters. And then HR will be getting an HR information system analyst to help the current one that they have with the workload of, with HR and all the systems and everything else. So, these are the budget enhancements that kind of weren't presented. Some of them were added, as the city manager mentioned, but these weren't presented. So, going on, this is just a recap of the ones that were presented for community safety, fire and medical, and also police for the four new sworn in there, but also some support services for fire and medical. And then on the police side, the additional positions of 11 sworn, and then also the traffic analyst that will be split between the police and then also transportation. And then moving on to meeting community needs and growth.
I'm sorry, do you mind going to that previous slide? Just because I think it'd be nice to get a little bit of an update on, the voters thankfully supported our sales tax increase to support hiring additional public safety personnel a year and a half ago. And so I just want to make sure that we are reporting back to them that we are following through on those commitments to hire more police officers and firefighters, and that's what this slide represents. But, so, the slide before this, I was a little concerned because we're getting, you know, a captain and a couple of engineer, an engineer and some firefighters, so it looked like we're getting four new positions, and I thought, oh geez, that's less than I want. But not, so I see now this slide says, no, it's not just those four, it's in addition to that, it's, here's a long list of additional firefighters and police officers that we're hiring. But, and then the academies and training, I guess, is where I want to focus. It says 24 recruits to fill future vacancies. So, the impression might be being created that we're hiring eight new firefighters, because on the previous page it was two, if it was four, on this page it's four, but then in addition to that, it's 24 recruits to fill future vacancies. So, I guess my question is, to what extent are those 24 just filling in slots that were vacated by attrition? To what extent is that increasing the size of our firefighting force? Can you talk about that for just a minute?
Mayor, council, let me start with the four that you saw on the previous slide. There, we had some concerns that we, when we redistributed all of our engines and ladders about two years ago with the data-driven deployment model, we put in two engines at 20, at 218. Our plan all along was to take one of those engines when we opened 221 and move it to 221. We had some concerns about coverage for 205 and 206 that I've discussed at length with council member Freeman, especially at night. So, what we did is, we will still be, I think 12 of those 24 slots on this next page go to 221. The four on the previous page, we combined with one of our MRUs, our medical response units, that was only daytime, that was staffed with eight people. We took the eight people off that, the four new people, and we are leaving an engine on the west side to work between 205 and 206 to make sure our citizens get excellent nighttime coverage in those two areas. So, this was, in conjunction with fire management, a way to address the issues that we were seeing on the west side while still enabling our ability to cover the growth on the east side. So, this is a combination of everything that you asked for. It is filling some vacancies, but it is also new bodies to help on the east and on the west.
So, Mayor, what we're doing too, just to be very clear, is we add personnel as we open up new stations, right? So, we time it. So, first thing, first priority is to fill vacancies through retirements and people leaving. So, that's built into the system to make sure we're covered so we never drop below our coverage for every fire station we have. Then on top of that, if we could go back to the presentations for both police and fire, you would see in there the timing of the academies and how those firefighters are coming out in time to fill the positions for the fire stations that are coming on, or for police when police stations are coming on. So, well, no, I should take that back. Firefighters, new firefighters coming on are timed related specifically to the timing of opening of new fire stations. Police officers, we're just hiring them, right? With an idea that we have to accelerate a little bit, or we'll accelerate a little bit more when we get to opening the, what do we call it, the public safety...
The news station.
News station. We have, I can't remember what we call it anymore. Anyway, you know what, the police and fire on Brown and Power. So, we included in here, Mayor, is both, everything we talked about when police and fire were here, to make sure we have the personnel to keep up with attrition and to meet the needs of new fire stations, and to add, I can't remember what the number was, Candace or somebody remember the total number of police officers we were adding under the public safety sales tax? There was a total number, Mayor, that we committed to in that sales tax when we went out, and we will meet that obligation over the next four to five years.
That's my question. Can you give us a status report on, and I know that's done over, we're ramping up, you can't just go from zero to...
There was a really good slide, and I don't have it, Mayor, and we can send it to the council, that PD included in their presentation that showed the academies, and then it showed all those officers coming in over the next, I don't know, four to five years. So, we can send that back out, and it's consistent with what you see here. It's not only showing what we're putting in this budget, but every subsequent budget as we're adding more officers. And as I think Chief Butler was talking about, they're doing multiple academies during the year to make sure we keep up with attrition as well as adding new officers during the time. But, there was a really good graph, and I don't have that, Mayor, but we can get it for you.
And Mayor and council, one of the things that shouldn't be lost on this is, we're running, by that slide, five academies, three police and two fires a year. I think three or four years ago, both management teams would have told me that wasn't possible. They found, both management and staff have found ways to crank out these recruits in a, still an amazing training model, and yet still meet the demands of attrition and growth. And we're, the public safety sales tax dollars have allowed us to ramp up those training academies to make this possible so that we can meet the demands that we're seeing, both in infill and replacement and in new bodies.
Great, I guess, I was just looking for a report, are we or are we not on track to meet the goals for hiring additional firefighters and police officers over the course of what, three or four years?
Yeah, we believe we are, Mayor. Yeah, we believe we are.
And Mayor and council, just to point out, on the fire side, the positions that are related to the Station 221 opening were actually included in last year's budget, so they're already in the budget, that's why you don't see them coming in new here. The positions that are related to Station 222, future opening, will actually be in next year's budget. Not quite ready to put them in through the academies this year, so again, that's why this year you don't see that big influx of positions. It was, one was last year, and the other one's going to be next year. So, these are really off-cycle positions, if you want to think about them that way.
And Mayor, I believe Candace can correct me if I'm wrong, but every decision we've made within the public safety sales tax has been to speed up the hiring of people, not slow down. Our original plan was here, we've accelerated that program in many different cases to bring more people on to meet the demands that we're seeing.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the analysis and being able to keep an engine company on the west side, because obviously I think we've found that all-hazard units are important because we've had an increase on certain calls on the west side. John, did you mention that you're taking an MR out of service and taking those personnel, those eight personnel, and then you're adding four additional?
Mayor, council member Freeman, yes. We took, we're going to take the MR from 201. 201 currently has three apparatus at it. We did the analysis, by absorbing those eight bodies into this engine, we did not affect call times whatsoever, response times whatsoever in the 201 area, and it allowed us to hopefully greatly affect our response in the 205, 206 area.
Mayor, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I just want to ask, so the MR is not going to be in service currently, you're not going to...
The MR will be available, and when we have staffing availability, they staff up as available.
Right.
So, this, we have other MRs in service. This MR will be taken out of everyday service, but will be available when we have the ability to staff it.
And the MR unit was just a 12-hour, or what?
It was a 12-hour peak time unit.
Seven, eight, to seven P, usually.
Yeah, so now we're adding a 24-hour engine.
All-hazard.
And as part of that, we added, we originally were going to add a third MR, so at the end of the day, the net is still two MRs. So, we had two. We were adding a third one to replace, to replace that engine. Now that we're keeping the engine, it's really a conversion of that MR to this. So, at the end of the day, you're going to net still two MRs on the west side.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think that was a reasonable thought to do that. I'm just looking at the, you have the analysis to whether we need that MR back in service sometime in the future. I will do that as...
Yeah, as we look at, when we add in the full service unit, we can evaluate that too.
And extra fire management and city management with Candace's data scientists are going to meet every December or January to make sure we're tracking all of those things so that we can see from a budget perspective where we need to add in the future.
I have a hard time seeing you with this style and the way, John, you kind of look divided.
Mayor, oh, and Mayor, I found a slide for PD when they presented. So, over the years 21-22 through 24-25, we will see the addition of a total of 60 personnel. Now, of that number, 35 are sworn patrol, and then you have other professional staff. So, it is, I think, in consistent with what we put in the sales tax, and they are showing how all those positions are coming on in their budget. So, there is a commitment to keep adding those positions as we go.
Really quick.
Mr. Ready.
Yep. On this slide and the previous slide, are these entirely new positions that we're adding for the city, or is it a mix of old positions that we never filled, or?
It's new positions and believe replacement, attrition replacement. It's a combination of both.
Both, okay.
Yes.
Even the budget enhancement not presented?
So, yeah, Mayor.
Those are new positions.
Those are, yes, those are new. On the previous slide, the budget enhancement's not presented, these are brand-new positions. So, these are positions that are brand-new that were not part of my presentation on the proposed budget. Some of them are, but these are brand-new positions to the fiscal year 21-22 budget. And then on the next slide, these are some new positions, but then also some for attrition.
Okay. And I would just add, I think all the positions on Slide 6 were in our original proposed budget except for the marketing specialist for economic development.
The marketing specialist...
And the captain engineers and the two firefighters.
Yes.
We've added those since the conversation with, discussion with council. We needed, we weren't, we were still doing the evaluation on fire while they were presenting to the council, so since then, John's been able to meet with them, have discussions, and then we made the decision with the recommendation to convert essentially the MR units to a full engine, and that's where that, that's what we're adding. We want to make sure council knows about that idea. And then, after the conversation we had about business licensing and the council wanted to use that list as a way to communicate with small businesses, we added the other position, economic development. So, those are new outside of what was in our original proposed budget that we presented to you at the beginning.
Just for those of us who aren't retired firefighters or assistant city managers over public safety, I know what an MR unit is, I promise.
I'm sorry.
Could you just...
Medical, it's a medical response unit, and so they are two-person units that go out and just respond to the medical. I'm sorry.
No, they're four-person.
They're four-person response, but they respond to the medical, they don't respond to fire.
These are those four-door pickup trucks we see.
Four-door trucks, correct.
There you go, Mayor.
So, we were talking about, we're still talking about a team, so when we talk about a team, we're still talking about a captain and engineer and two firefighters. They're just not on an engine. They're on a different vehicle that's a little bit more mobile and can get them out to the medical calls.
I just, little correction, I think they do respond to fires, they just are part of the staffing crew on...
Their first priorities respond to medical, they can if needed.
They do respond. I want to make sure the public knows.
Mayor and council, we had two different MRs respond to the most recent fire downtown, and what they do is, they get off, they take their equipment, and then they cycle in with the other people on the ladder trucks and/or engines and pumbers. So, yes, you are correct, they do respond, their primary is medical, but they're available for response.
They still have their turnout here.
To be clear, the reason they are medical first is because, based on the data, and this is countrywide, and I was doing this in my previous life, the majority of calls, over 70% of calls responded to our medical. And so, in an effort to be more efficient in our response, instead of sending a big pumper to every type of medical call, we set up these units so that they could be able to, certainly with four persons, they can handle an acute call, a significant call, they can, all levels of medical calls. But, as council member Freeman was saying, at the same time, they are available to be a backup and support if there's a fire, but their primary call, frankly, is to keep the fire engine in the station while they go respond to the medical call and keep the engine and all that equipment available for the higher hazard calls that might come in. So, that's the, I guess, strategy for their use.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So, continuing on with the themes, meeting community needs and growth, this was also presented previously, but just to recap on the support for homeless service coordination plan, we have the, just to highlight some of them, are the community court program navigators, the three additional navigators, then also four additional park rangers for the parks. And then down in the growth and the development, we added a plans examiner, and also a planner for development services, and then also another economic development specialist. And then investing in community growth, for the education workforce development, we have the Mesa K Ready, and then also the Mesa Promise in the budget, and then there's the support for small business assistance programs of the $300,000 to support the business builder. And then also we have the support community re-engagement in the arts, and that's the equipment and commodities in preparation for reopening the facilities. Then investing in the transportation and transit, as mentioned before, the big ones for that is the master plan for transportation, but also the traffic analyst that will be shared with PD. And then on the transit side, the expanding of the services along Mesa Drive, Stapley Drive, and Broadway Road, and then also a study for the bus shelters and adding 10 new bus shelter shade for designing construction. So, wrapping that all up on finalizing the budget, just to remind everybody, state requires that all expenses occurring in the fiscal year are, should be, are need to be included in the annual legal adopted budget, and that includes any carryover for operations, any expenses that are related to large projects, we carry those over to the next fiscal year. And then also for grants, expenses and revenues for grants, we carry over so we have the budgetary capacity to continue those. And then in adopting the budget, which we'll do on March, on May 17th, when we adopt the tentative budget, that sets the maximum expenditure the city can incur in one fiscal year. That does include a contingency fund, which helps with any unexpected or unanticipated expenses throughout the year that we can help fund. And then, the next, as I mentioned, for the budget process calendar, on May 17th will be the adoption of the five-year capital improvement program. As mentioned before, we did the presentations on the non-utilities and utilities during the April presentations, but then also it's, on May 17th is the tentative adoption of the annual budget. And then we'll come back two weeks later and do a public hearing on the annual budget, and then also a public hearing for the secondary property tax levy, and then council will take action on adopting the final budget.
So, thank you, Brian. Just, Mayor and council, just a reminder, we're required to establish the tentative budget, and that's why we do that on the 17th, and it has to be available for, like, a certain number of days, we publish, two weeks?
Yeah, two weeks.
So, we have to publish that and put that out there prior to the public hearing on the 7th, and then that's when the adoption is. So, that's just to understand why it's coming up in May. The actual adoption doesn't take place the 7th, but we're required to publish the document, publish the tentative budget for the public so they can make, if they have any comments, they can have those comments on June 7th. Thank you.
And then last but not least, on June 21st, it'll be the adoption of the secondary property tax levy. And with that, that would end the city budget process.
Right. Thank you very much. That was, this has been a fascinating year to talk about finances, given the context of all the federal funding that we're receiving and how that fits in, and actually, that's the next two agenda items I see on this meeting is to talk about the rest of this equation with all of the extraordinary funding that's coming in due to the coronavirus relief funding that we're receiving. Council, any additional questions for these gentlemen? Mr. Thompson, Mr. Luna, are you okay? Okay, thank you. Well, thank you very much, appreciate all the work that's gone into the budget discussions. Next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide funding recommendations for fiscal year 1920 CARES funding related to COVID-19 for emergency solutions grant coronavirus funding. Ladies, good to see you. Michelle and Ruth.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Ruth Giesi here, Community Services Director, and beside me is Michelle Albanese, Housing and Community Development Director. As we get going here, today we are going to be reviewing two items for council recommendation and approval. The first is the Emergency Solutions Grant, Phase Two. And this funding is actually the second funding source that the federal government sent to us. The first round came earlier in the process, and Mayor and council approved that in April of 2020. So, today, this is the second round of funding of about $4 million. The second funding is the Community Development Block Grant funding, and both of these funding sources are for coronavirus impact, so they were specifically given to the city based on the CARES Act of 2020. So, both of these funding sources, we'd like to talk with you in more detail about. Other funding related to the pandemic, such as the rescue dollars, that will be, is being reviewed by city management, and recommendations will be forthcoming at a later date for council review. So, today it's just the ESG, Emergency Solutions Grant, and the CDVG solution, CV-related funding. So, with that, Michelle Albanese is going to go in more detail about both funding sources.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Last month, we presented to you the funding recommendations for fiscal year 21-22, and today, as Ruth mentioned, we're coming to you with the coronavirus funding, so specifically for COVID-19 activities. So, just want to give a quick overview of how we arrived at the funding allocations that we'll be presenting to you here in just a moment. In developing those presentations, funding recommendations, we looked at the city council priorities and support for city programs as well as other programs that address homelessness in the community. We also looked at programs and services that would be eligible for the ESG COVID dollars, so some of the activities that agencies applied for in the fiscal year 21-22 wouldn't necessarily meet these requirements. We considered agencies in the CDVG program that were partially funded, and those activities do translate to eligibility for ESG, so we were able to supplement additional funding. We looked at agencies who applied in the human services funding but were not able to be funded due to the high demand. And finally, we looked at programs and services that were funded through the first round of ESG COVID dollars, and we're going to be recommending to allocate additional funds to those programs and services. One of the most important pieces is to also, not only are the activities eligible under ESG COVID, but that the agencies can administer the program with the federal requirements. Just a recap, I know we talked last year for ESG COVID when it first came out, this program is specifically to address homeless needs in the community, and activities that are eligible include homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, as well as navigation services in the community and shelter operations. And specifically for the ESG COVID, we're looking at Mesa residents that have been directly impacted by COVID, so this money can only be used for COVID-related activities. We're looking at the urgency, what are the needs in the community, as well as to assist the most vulnerable at this time. With that, I'd like to transition to the actual recommendations, and you'll see, we have it color-coded, and I'll explain that there is a reason to my madness here with the colors. So, if we look at the first section for the agencies that are highlighted in blue, those agencies competitively submitted applications through the first round of ESG COVID-1. And so, we are recommending to provide level funding to those agencies, they've been successful in administering those programs and services, and they have a need to continue to address the COVID-related issues. I just want to point out, as I mentioned, level funding, with the exception of the first agency that's listed in blue for a new leaf, they originally had asked for money for their shelter operations as well as expansion of their beds, 10 additional beds. So, we are funding in them this time just for their shelter operations since they already have those beds.
We went with this, and I think you mentioned, but I think it's worth emphasizing... We went with this, and I think you mentioned, but I think it's worth emphasizing that these groups were, were in the original, uh, funding. And, uh, as far as staff can tell, they are both capable of, they've done a very good job of spending, providing the, the services, as well as these are agencies that we're comfortable with, are, can administer, or, what, um, they can administer the federal dollars. They have the capacity to do that, is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct. Thank you. So as we transition, um, into the orange, that is the, um, city program operation off the streets, uh, one of the city council priorities, and so we're able to provide funding to that program through ESG COVID. As we move to the yellow, these are agencies that did apply in the fiscal year 2122 process, so it was a competitive process. They were awarded CDVG funds, partial funding. So what we did here is, it's all score-based, so with their original request, we did a percentage of additional funding that we could provide based on their score.
They've already, partial dollars they received in the, the first round?
That is correct. I can give you an example. So for example, um, a new leaf had requested $200,000 for their shelter services, and they were awarded 100,000 through CDVG. So with this additional funding based on their score, we're able to fund an additional 60,000 to support their operations. And then finally, the agencies that are highlighted in green, these are agencies that we looked at who applied for human service dollars, but were not funded, and we needed to make sure that their activity would be eligible under the ESG COVID grant, and these would be, they all address homeless services. Um, and so we were able to provide funding in this category, again, based on score, so it was a percentage of their original, um, request. And so with that, um, we would like to recommend these, um, funding awards for a total of 3,765,000. That includes the City of Mesa administration. And there will be a small balance, um, left over, which could be used to supplement and support these programs if needed, or to fund another program, um, through CDVG, which I'll be talking about in just a moment.
So Mayor and Council, when we came to you with the list for CDVG and the general fund, human services funds, there were, obviously, we couldn't fund everybody in council, we, but we did say, um, there's more coming, more dollars coming. And so that's today, when we said, listen, there were some that we couldn't fully fund in their full, in their request, or some that didn't get funded at all under human services. And we said, but we are, more federal dollars are coming, and we, we talked about how we would come back and try to bring some of those agencies, either providing additional funding from what they received in that first round, or providing, um, funding that they didn't receive at all. So that's what, we, that's why I think Michelle's gone through this, just to show you, we're trying to follow up from that, um, discussion we had a month ago or so.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we all remember that discussion and, and just saying to the agencies, be patient. We think you're, we're going to be able to fund you eventually. All of this is very, uh, very clear, uh, but again, for those of us who might not be clued into all of the vocabulary, Autumn House, can you describe, uh, I, I know it's, we've had it forever, but it's just not evident by the name, what, what services are being provided by Autumn House?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I believe that Autumn House is for domestic violence, um, and so it does serve residents in the community that, um, are, are having issues with domestic violence, and so that's what that shelter is for.
That's, that's my understanding as well. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Heredia?
On the city programs, where, where do these, uh, these programs housed in, uh, who is, I think it's a mix of departments, right? That?
Right. So you'll have in here, well, CBI is going to be the navigators. When you also has commute bridges, so we, when we have the individuals that are unsheltered and we, um, house them in the hotel rooms, we also make sure there are services there to meet, meet, meet with them and work with them. And Natalie and Erin have set that up so that we make sure that it's not just putting them in a room, but there's a tremendous amount of support. I don't know how many navigators this is. Natalie, do you want to talk about that?
Um, so I, I believe we have, it's a combination of, of a whole bunch of different CBI staff and what they need at, at any given time. So that shifts and, and flows as their need is. But, um, where this is really housed is the contract for these services will be housed out of community, out of community services. The, um, the work that we're doing on the ground is absolutely cross-departmental.
But the, the department that is housed and managed is?
Visible. These contracts are.
This, yes.
All three contracts?
Yes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, Mayor? Mayor? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
That's, that's okay, Mr. Luna. Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to thank, uh, Michelle and Ruth. Uh, you know, we have this problem every year. We have a pot of money, and, uh, it's always a challenge, uh, especially when we have the CCD meetings to try to allocate the funds. And we're very fortunate that we have these extra COVID dollars to provide, uh, the agencies' additional dollars. And I know that they worked really hard, uh, to fund the agencies that we weren't able to fund the first time. So, uh, I want to thank them personally for doing that, reaching out to the agencies. But I also want to express my gratitude to the agencies who were, who were patient, who were a little nervous about not getting the, the initial, uh, rent, um, funding. And, but, uh, I'm glad that they were patient, and I'm glad that, uh, Michelle and Ruth and their staff were able to continue to funding these agencies that provide the wraparound service to many of our members here in the City of Mesa and their, and, and the services. So, so thank you, agencies, for being patient, and thank you, Michelle and Ruth, uh, uh, for working so hard to, to fund the agencies that, that do a really good job for the City of Mesa. So thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Luna. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'm so happy to see these monies flowing into our agencies to provide the services that we need to weather the rest of the storm. I just wanted to have a clarification for my own mine. And homeless prevention, I see there's a couple of line items there under that category. And what are those services in comparison to, we have the emergency rental and utility assistance that we're doing in the city? Is it, um, the same type of services, or how is it different?
Mayor and Council, um, thank you very much. That's a good question. So, um, one of the agencies, uh, Save the Family, they do the prevention, and they serve solely families. So some of the other money that we're using for the eviction prevention, that's for a, a different, you know, array of folks, um, as well as the income is different. So with ESG, it's a lower income bracket, as, um, the other dollars that we are using are a higher in, income bracket.
So the emergency utility and rent, um, rental assistance that we do, that we house within the city, there are parameters around income, and if it fits better and they would be referred to, like Save the Family or Mesa Can, or is that how that works?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we absolutely collaborate with the agencies. So if there happens to be, um, say, a family that's not eligible through, say, Save the Family because they're over income, we could try to assist them through a different program here. So we definitely work together. Um, there's different restrictions on the different money and, and different programs.
Okay. And when do these funds go into, when are they awarded? Is it into the new fiscal year, or as soon as we, you know, bless these, they're going to be expensed? Do we have the dollars now?
Thank you. Yes, actually, um, these were allocated to the city back in 2019. So they came out in different phases as the guidance came out from HUD. And so it's available as soon as the recommendations are approved and we submit our requests to HUD, then we do have those dollars. But we are able to go ahead and enter into contracts with the agencies for the services, and that was kind of a benefit of the COVID dollars, is that they wanted the money out quickly, so some of the other processes could follow.
So I would assume then it would be in a short amount of time from the approval process for the agencies receiving the monies and being able to continue their work?
That is correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Council, other questions on this item? Remind me, I know we talked about, uh, we're, an additional strategic position that we're adding, uh, going forward, I believe, is a, a human services coordinator, right? And, and, and I, I, I love what we're doing. I love that we've, we've got the resources now to really, in a meaningful way, uh, address all these critical human service needs that we have in our community. Some that were made more obvious and, and, uh, more serious by the pandemic, but others that predated the pandemic. And it just, and we've got a lot of wonderful people on our staff that are, that are running these programs. I'm excited about the, the idea, though, that we might have, bring in a quarterback to kind of, uh, help us avoid having a bunch of silos within even our own organization. For example, dur, during the, the Veterans Homelessness, uh, campaign that we participated and still are participating in, we, we were made aware of the, the importance of having a, a list by name of the individuals that we're working with. That, that really humanizes it, and it helps us realize that, you know, this is an individual and, and it's a, it's somebody that we can have a relationship with and somebody we want to care about and, and track their progress. And I, with all of the things that were going on, I'm just, I'm just hoping that we don't, that we, I'm looking forward to having that quarterback come in and say, hey, where's, let's start a, a by-name list so that we can see, uh, you know, if, if we're, we just need to coordinate, I guess. But can you talk a little bit about when that, uh, the role that person is going to have, and when that person's going to come on, and, and how all of these buckets of money, you know, that we're talking about today and, uh, are, are going to be coordinated by someone?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The human services coordinator, we envision really being our, uh, quarterback, as you, um, said, for our homelessness activities. So for example, all the agencies here related to homelessness, we want to be connected with all those agencies. We want to know, um, how they're doing, what other additional support they have. Are we all working together, uh, making sure we're not, um, duplicating services, that we're really reaching out to those that haven't had the opportunity to take advantage of services? That person will also really serve as a conduit with our Operation Off the Streets campaign, you know, working closely with CBI, with Erin Rain, and then also serve as a, um, resource for the city manager's office, uh, for mayor and council. If there's a question, if we're not sure what's happening, a point in time count, um, that person would be overseeing that area as well. We, um, Michelle and her team will continue to be kind of the managers of the contracts and all the money and every, and making sure that we're, we're meeting federal requirements. Whereas the human services coordinator will really serve as that resource of information, uh, probably, uh, working at a, you know, definitely at a regional level as well. And, and also working with, we will be, um, having, uh, an additional housing, uh, services specialist as well, uh, perhaps working on, with that team to make sure that we're, uh, reaching out to landlords, to incentivize landlords, to also be working with us with our housing stability programs. So it's, uh, we really hope, um, that we can add to that. At first, it's going to be boots on the ground, running with all our homelessness activities. But then, uh, as we gather more information, that person's really going to be that expert for us.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sure we'll, we'll all be very familiar with that person, and, and will be an important part of our team.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, the next agenda item, Mr. Brady, is it same cast of characters?
No, not that.
Oh, I apologize. Please proceed.
No problem.
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just one more slide. Um, this just illustrates the proposed allocations, um, by category for the eligible activities for ESG COVID two. And then finally, um, we would request that the city council, um, approve the recommendations as provided, or if there are any other changes to the recommendations.
All right. So this is agendized to provide funding recommendations. We don't need a motion on this, do we?
I think you would, Mayor, because we're acting for a specific recommendation, so we can start entering the contracts with these agencies.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so Council, we have a, some, some specific funding recommendations that are proposed by staff. Is there a motion to support these recommendations? Thank you, Vice Mayor, and seconded by Ms. Spillsberry. Any additional discussion on this item? Uh, if, if not, let's just do a voice vote. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you for your good work, ladies.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Now, next, uh, agenda item, again, I'm, I'm guessing it might be the same, uh, presenters?
They're, they're on a roll, Mayor. We're going to keep them up here.
Thank you. And so just, just for the record, the next, next we'll talk about the CDVG funding, uh, aspect of this, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You're going to be tired of seeing us up here after a while.
No, we're not.
Okay. So this will be a, a quick presentation. Um, we wanted to talk to you about the CDVG COVID dollars. So similar to the ESG, these dollars have to be used specifically for, um, community residents that have been impacted by COVID. We have approximately $6 million in, um, the CDVG funds. And HUD had issued several waivers when the CARES Act was, um, was approved. And so, different from our normal CDVG funds, we do not have a public service cap or limit on these funds. So any of the activities that we fund, it could be 100% public services, it could also just be, um, non-public service, just as the regular CDVG funds. We will be doing a competitive application process, and that will begin later this month. And we'll be looking at, obviously, those activities that are eligible for CDVG and also directly related to COVID. And then we hope to return back to city council before the end of summer breaks, that we could approval for those funding recommendations and enter into contracts. What I wanted to present to you today was just some high-level proposed priorities for the Community Development Block Grant COVID funds. And, um, we've heard over the last several months that education and workforce development has been, um, very important and a priority for the council. So this would be, uh, a general funding, um, category that could be used for the COVID dollars. Health services, and this could run the gamut from being mobile health services, um, mental health services, addiction services, um, and then emergency and bridge to housing, or what we're calling the path to recovery. So really filling the gaps for emergency housing, um, such as domestic violence, or, um, children that are out of the foster care system and they're homeless, or, um, young youth with, with children. So that's kind of the range of, um, activities that we're looking for, as well as food and basic services. So anybody that's been impacted by COVID, um, could, could receive services through these funds.
So Mayor and Council, just make sure the subtlety of this isn't past you. What we're asking you to, we just want to get your concurrence, um, that we've kind of identified these as priorities. And what that means is, as we go through the solicitation from the nonprofits, from the agencies for the, the $6 million, we are essentially informing the agencies with this, um, these priorities, if this is what council would like us to focus on, is if they make, if they submit proposals that are related to one of the, any one of these priorities, it essentially gives them, um, higher consideration and the points we allocate for determining, you know, who's eligible to receive a portion of that $6 million. So it's just, it's like we did previously, um, months ago with the, um, annual CDVG cycle, where we sit down with council and say, what are your priorities? And we use that in our scoring so that if, if we have agencies who submit something specifically related to, um, senior food services or whatever, that's a priority. Then we will, we, as we look at the scoring and the submittals, I mean, the priorities obviously have one part of it. We have to look at their capacity to spend the money, their experience in spending money, their administration, there's a lot of other factors. But this is something that we put out there so that the nonprofits also see, oh, if I want to maybe improve my chances of receiving funding, I'm going to look for something, maybe mobile, uh, healthcare services or something like that, that may help me based on this to get a higher consideration in the scoring. So I hope that, that's what, that's why we're here, is not that somebody couldn't get funding that was outside of this, but those that would submit that are related to this specifically would be given consideration. And I just want it, that Councilman Heredia rec, acknowledged that workforce development component we put at top, you've been talking to us a lot about that, so that's, that's on here too. Anyway, so that's what this is, and if you're comfortable with that, great, or if there's something else, or maybe a clarification of what these priorities are, this is the time to tell us, we're going to take your direction today based on these priorities, and then come, and go through the solicitation, the scoring, and then come back in September, August, September? What'd you say?
Um, we'd like to come back prior to council.
Oh, so? Oh, so in June or July, so soon, okay, so it's a quick turnaround, so.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I like, I'll just lead off by saying I like these priorities. I think it reflects what we've done previously, particularly related to COVID. We're prioritizing basic needs. We have food and shelter, health service and emergency response, as well as education and workforce development, which I think is the pathway out for the population that we're talking about helping here. So personally, I'll say that, yes, I endorse and like this list of priorities. Council, let's go with Vice Mayor and then Mr. Freeman.
I just had one thought, and it's just not thought out, because I just thought about it. Childcare seems to be a huge issue in COVID, and we've lost a lot of workforce because of childcare, and it is a basic need even before COVID, but I know we're talking about COVID dollars here. I don't even know if there's agencies or vehicles in a way to address childcare or provide assistance for anybody so they could get back to work if they had more help with the childcare issue?
Mayor and Council, there absolutely could be agencies out there that are providing those types of services, and we could be sure if that was a priority of Council, that we tried to contact and reach out and just try to get the word out that we'll be looking for these types of services as well. Childcare is an eligible public service under CDBG, if it's related to COVID.
Vice Mayor, I think to your point, if we find an agency came in, was offering that to assist someone so they could be employed and have a job, I think that fits in with that first category, for sure.
And with the workforce development, so that would be acceptable.
I think so, I think we would consider that, yeah.
Okay, that's great. And usually on our CDGB dollars, I know this is COVID-related, but in our general fund that we do annually, what is the total figure? How does this compare? This is $6 million, what do we usually do?
We're not, we're not, what do we add?
So, thank you, Mayor and Council. Our normal allocation is just over $4 million, so we, for '21-'22, we'll have the $4 million, plus we have the $6 million in the CDBG.
Wow, this is a year to make true impact and really move our community into a healthy, sustainable life. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Freeman, then Mr. Heredia.
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies, I was just, in the prior presentation, I was thinking about food banks and how food banks may, are they eligible for applying for this, too, on food distribution?
Yes, Mayor and Council, any type of activity related to food, as long as they're a nonprofit and they meet the other criteria for CDBG, then yes, that would be an eligible activity.
So in that, what are they eligible for? I mean, do they, like I was thinking, any, in order to expand their ability to deliver services, can they, like tenant improvements? I mean, is it, can they do that? I mean, what can they apply for? Say, if food bank wants to apply, obviously, we've worked very hard.
In the past, yeah, Councilman Freeman, in the past, and they have applied for equipment, for refrigerators, freezers maybe. So, because the food sites, food supply, they seem through the federal government to get a lot of the food supply, but it's more the logistics support of facility expansion, equipment.
We've got trailers, I know.
Trailers, so those are, I think that's been more typical of what they have come to us most recently with.
So what would be your expectation now if a food bank came to you?
Well, yeah. The one right now, the discussions we're having is trying to help the food bank find a more permanent location for their distribution. Because the current, well, obviously, they're not at the convention center parking lot anymore, so they're sighted, I think it's Havelina, is just.
Yeah, they're compromised.
It's very difficult, so we've been in discussions with them, Mr. Hirschberg has, and they are currently looking for alternative permanent sites. And so either through this, now, this would, you know, that would be a large ask for this, but we are talking with them about maybe related to the rescue funds, once we understand those. But, but again, even without that, if they came to us for equipment or.
And even food, correct? I mean, purchase food off of this?
I think so, I don't.
For distribution in the community?
It's usually been the things that are harder for them to fund are more the equipment and facilities. That seems to be their biggest ask when they come to us.
Well, I think I go back to the Mayor's comments, some of our basic needs and services as a human is we need food to eat and to provide those services. The logistic component is important, but the ability to distribute that is the other side of it. So food and distribution, and I like the list here. And I really like the workforce development. I think having that component for individuals to improve their, their ability to work is great if they're willing to do that. So I appreciate Councilmember Heredia suggesting that.
Mr. Heredia.
Question on, you had mentioned these funds are from the previous COVID relief package last year. There's also subsequent relief packages much recently. Do we anticipate getting additional pools of funding? I know I asked this question, but as far as timeline-wise, there's another pool of funding that might be coming in for, I don't know if it's CDBG or ESG or some of these pools that we can also support agencies and other members of the community. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Absolutely, Mayor and Council. So the CARES Act provided all of the funding that we've been coming to you with. It's been released in different phases, so that's why we're coming to you now with the CDBG. The only additional funding that I'm aware of right now is potential home dollars through the new, new funding allocations, and that would be directly for taking homeless individuals and getting them into more permanent supportive housing, possibly into Housing Choice voucher down the road, or acquisition and rehabilitation of units. So it'd be directly for like supply of housing. I haven't heard that there's any additional CDBG or ESG dollars, but that's not to say that there wouldn't be.
Okay.
Specifically talking about the American.
So now, separate, and I thought we have, this does not include, that would be another discussion.
Another discussion, yeah, okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, thank you. This is also agendized to provide directions, so Council, is there a motion to support staff's recommendation of these priorities? Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury, seconded by Mr. Heredia. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you, any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Thanks again, ladies, for your hard work on this. The next item on our agenda is item two. This item, we will continue to a future council meeting. Item three is current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. Council, who'd like to begin? Vice Mayor?
On Tuesday evening, I attended the Benedictine University Joe Wilson Leadership Desert Reception, and Mayor Giles was there, and recognized the mentees and mentors of many of the students at Benedictine University, our first-generation college students, and they're very determined, they're phenomenal, they're going to rock this world. And I want to thank Benedictine University for lifting the community and providing these opportunities for education, mentoring our future leaders. Yesterday, I attended Arizona League of Cities Sustainability and Quality of Life Committee Meeting, which we discussed electric vehicle charging stations, recycling and energy efficiencies, our needs and possible policy proposals. And last night, I attended the consulate general Mexico of Phoenix, a Cinco de Mayo celebration. It was a fundraising event benefiting the nonprofit Friendly House as a scholarship program for students, so, thank you.
Ms. Spillsbury.
Yeah, just real quick, I wanted to thank RJ and his staff for showing me the Traffic Management Center. It's always fascinating to me to see the behind-the-scenes work that goes on that we take for granted every day when we're driving around, and so thank you to them and all of their hard work there.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Luna.
Yesterday, I served on the awarding committee for Mesa Community Colleges Endowed Teacher Chair Award led by MCC President Dr. Laurie Berquem. Three finalists for the board gave presentations to the awarding committee demonstrating their excellence in providing quality, quality instruction and engaging in innovative and effective teaching practices. The selected faculty member will be awarded with a cash award, and so we want to congratulate the faculty members that were selected, and I probably won't make it public, I'll let the college make that public, so. And also, last night, I joined in the Arizona Department of Health Services telephonic town hall with Carrie Penya and Dr. Cara Chris, discussing the value of getting vaccinated. This important event helped answer community questions around the safety and efficacy of the COVID-19 vaccine, and encouraged all Arizonans to get vaccinated. As you know, I'm very passionate about ensuring that all our residents get vaccinated in order to protect public health and to allow us to get back to normal. And I'm happy that I had the opportunity to share the message with City of Mesa District 3 and District 5.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Are you done?
Yes, I am, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for all you're doing for us, Mr. Luna, we appreciate it. Council, other comments? Mr. Freeman?
I'll just add, I attended the Public Safety Committee meeting for the Arizona League of Cities, and it's quite informative, had a robust discussion. Thanks.
You're the right person to be there, thanks for doing that. Other comments? I haven't mentioned this previously, but for the last year or so, I've been serving as the chairman of the Mayor's Education Roundtable, which is just the state of Arizona. It's a gathering facilitated by WestEd and Helios, and about every two or three months, we have a meeting and talk about different education-related topics, and it's been my honor to serve as the chair of that for the last year or so. We did have a very informative meeting yesterday on early childhood education and pre-K efforts. I was proud to talk about what we're doing in the city of Mesa, but there's, that's a topic that sometimes we don't talk about as much as we should, and I'm still interested in looking for additional ways for us to get better at that. Right now, in the city of Mesa, about a third of our kids get some sort of introduction to education before they show up to kindergarten, their first day of kindergarten, and that's below the national average, which is about 50%. So this is something that, as a community and as a state, we need to get better at, and I appreciate all of the folks in our community that have contributed money and resources, and I'm looking forward to our Workforce Development and Education Roundtable convening and helping us to figure out a path forward to get better at that as well. Council, anything else you'd like to share with us? Mr. Thompson, Mr. Luna, you're good? All right, Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor, just a reminder, there'll be an Audit Finance Committee meeting, oh, good, immediately following this meeting, and then our next study session will be May 13th, which will be followed by a City Council meeting on May 17th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the items on our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion adjourned? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Heredia. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.